Special meeting. Acknowledge of receipts, acknowledge receipt of boards, of minutes from boards, commissions and committees, Economic Development Commission One, Historic Preservation Advisory Board One, North End and Industrial Business Park Advisory Subcommittee Six. Acknowledge receipt of reports, Town Administrator Department's monthly reports, February 2025, Town Administrator Police and Fire Department overtime reports, February 2025. Acknowledge receipt of correspondence, Town of Burriville, Joint Resolution 25-01, requesting support and subsidy for transportation of homeless students. Town of Burriville, Resolution 2502, in support of Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, 2025 legislative priorities. Town of Burriville, Resolution 2503, in support of House Bill 2025 H 5371 relating to state affairs and government public notice act. Town of Westerly, Resolution in support of House Bill 5457, an act relating to public records, access to public records. Armenian National Committee requesting flag to be flown on April 24, 2025 for Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day. Would any councilors like to remove any from the consent agenda? Councilor Janik.
4D2.
Any other councilors who have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Councilor Janik.
Okay, so 4D2 is from the Burriville Town Council, and they're in support of the Rhode Island League of City and Towns 2025 legislative priorities. Part of what they're discussing is adopting policies that support 39 distinct communities, avoiding one-size-fits-all solutions, especially regarding land use, business licensing, and other important policy areas, maintaining local control and decision-making that reflects community needs, including land use, business operations, et cetera. This has really been, come up in light to our land use in the town. We have our four reps from the state. It's really caused a lot of issues in town, where we have a lot of different home developments coming in, about 1,000 homes we're looking at, and it's coming from the state level that we're mandated to approve these. So we just want to be looked at as a distinct, different town, and that all 39 towns and cities can't be using the same uniform rules and regulations. So what I would suggest is that we do support this, and we do do a write-up and send to the state.
Do you want your own resolution on this one?
Yes.
That's what it sounds like. All right. Motion to accept, Councilor Janik?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a seconded? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Next up, we have five, which is a presentation under the presentation category, so it's discussion with state legislators regarding 2025 housing package and other legislation. I know we have both Senator Fiegleg and De Palma here, and then Representatives Edwards and McGaw, so if you guys would like to come up, that would be fantastic. I promise, we don't bite.
It's probably seats there. Yeah, yeah. It's empty seats.
Senator Fiegleg likes to stand at the podium, though.
As he gets older, he's standing less.
Well, they said when I come to Tiverton, I can bring a check, so this is for the senior senator on behalf of the legislators.
Wonderful. Thank you, Senator Fiegleg.
How many people here from the Captain Circle area? Okay, you're all going to get a letter in like next two days from Representative McGaw and myself. We're going to be holding an event at the Tiverton Library on the 24th at 6:00. Just to go over the issues you have in your neighborhood with, I think it's Friendship Farm. So if you're available, we're having the event then. I wanted to get that out now, so you'll know in advance.
What time?
April 24th.
6:00.
March 24th.
And just want to reiterate again, thank you, Senator Fiegleg, for the $2,000 check to the senior senator. Much appreciated.
For the legislative...
Well, you handed it to me, so I got to thank you. Thank you all. So I know in advance of this discussion, the planning board was kind enough to meet, deliberate, and put together a list of concerns. I believe all of those were shared with you. If not, you've got them, wonderful. Concerns that we have with the existing state housing package, and I know that the speakers just dropped several new bills as it relates to modifying zoning and housing, so I'm sure we'll have some more thoughts on that from the planning board as well. I guess spin it back to you guys, if there is anything on here that specifically jumps out, or perhaps any of the, any of the council.
Well, one of the things, I mean, there's a lot of rumors and statements going around town, heard from people saying that the state is basically just shoving this thing down your throat. The comprehensive permits have been in place since the 90s, so this is nothing new. It's just a new vehicle. But everyone's saying that there's nothing you can do. Actually, there's quite a bit you can do. First thing is, if your infrastructure is not available, water and sewer, you don't have to take it. Through that and that alone, you don't have to have these developments come. The second thing is, you can phase them. You can say if you've got 250 units coming up, you can do 25 a year for 10 years. And one of the things I spoke to the speaker about directly is the problem we have when something comes, a comprehensive permit comes before our planning board, they get approved, they get sort of locked in. We're looking to actually change that. Representative McGaw and I are going to be introducing legislation and sharing it with our Senate colleagues, saying that they won't be locked in until they actually pull a building permit. Someone who's in the construction industry, I know that serious doesn't get serious until you actually pull the building permit. And that will, that will be locked in for a period of time. We're going to be working with June Spekman from Warren Bristol to, she's also got something in very similar. So we're going to work to see if we can come up with a mutual bill between the towns to do that. But there are things that the town can do. Infrastructure, the phasing, you can also, you don't also have to take what they say. If you have a development come in that has 50 houses, or 50 units, or 200 units, you don't have to take the entire amount. You can tell them you're going to take of the 50, 30. Of the 200, you might take 100 and a quarter. But you don't have to take the total amount of the units. And this is all already in law. So based on that, and I've discussed with Ms. Hilton of the planning board, one of the hottest things you want to get through this year, and Representative McGaw and I will be introducing this first, is to get credit for your mobile homes, your single-family homes out at like Country View, those type of things, and we're going to try to make an end run around the leased property issue.
Explain that.
They don't, you don't get credit, full credit, because they don't own the property they sit on. They own the house or the, or the mobile home, but they don't own the property underneath.
So that'd be Country View.
Country View is a 99-year lease.
Yeah, and the mobile, the mobile home parks too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, being that none of us are going to live probably to 99 years, that's a pretty fair deal.
Speak for yourself.
Another, excuse me, another issue that was addressed by myself and members of the Senate along with the House last year was the definition of low and moderate income. As you know, mostly it's the housing for the elderly that qualify, and so that's why you see towns like Warren have 3.4%, Tiverton, Bristol, maybe a 4% or 5%, way below the 10%, which sets off the clock in terms of the comprehensive permit process. Last year, a bill, again, that I sponsored, was the main sponsor, we passed it, was to expand that definition, and it expanded the definition to include the Section 8 housing within your communities. And so now Rhode Island Housing has to count those particular Section 8 housing applicants starting December 31, 2024. So what that means is that in that point in time, as you know, the Section 8 vouchers are portable vouchers, so they can go from one town to the next town, but as of December 31, it's counted within the community that voucher is being utilized. So at the end of March, we will be receiving those new updated numbers for the low and moderate income within particular communities. So for instance, Warren may be getting up to 8 or maybe even 9% based on the legislation that was passed last year that will bring us closer, and I don't know the exact number of what Tiverton will have, but I'm sure it will update your particular numbers.
Thank you, and, um, no, sorry, keep going.
I was, sure. I was just going to read, just with a, to a little background, Rep. Edwards and I were just talking, and he said, you know, he said it with kind of a broad brooch, but I just want to read from the statute, just so that people are clear, that there are things that give the town certainly some, some, some leverage here. From the statute, it says there will be no, that part of the approval process would require that there would be no significant negative impacts on the health and safety of current or future residents of the community in areas including, but not limited to, safe circulation of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, provision of emergency services, sewage disposal, availability of potable water, adequate surface water runoff, and the preservation of natural, historical, and cultural features that contribute to the attractiveness of the community. All of those things will play into whether or not these can be approved, and I know that there were some concerns about whether or not the infrastructure from a water perspective, from a sewage...
...has an especially hardship with this, and Rep. McGaw and I will be meeting with him to go through the, that item in particular, as well as the building permit issue.
I had a question. In regards to the, what you just mentioned about there being a safety concern, who is in charge of deciding whether there's a concern or there isn't a concern? A safety concern to you may be different than to you or someone else?
You're the town.
Okay. The council votes on it?
No, I think your, your public safety people do.
Okay.
So like at Friendship Farm, I understand there might be only one entrance, one road entrance, and you're putting 250, they want to put 250-some odd units back there. Fire department might have an issue with that.
I just, we're asking from all the 39 cities and towns, their executive committee happens...
So do we.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll work to that end.
The other piece not on this list, and I do want to bring it up, Councilor Perry has mentioned this a couple of times, but I, you know, I think, at least from my perspective, I would, I would be looking for enabling legislation to allow us to do a homestead exemption here in Tiverton. So I know it's simple enabling legislation, but if there's...
What, what, that's what we just passed last week. I believe the House had passed, that's what we just passed last week. I believe the House had passed it as well. So it'll be, because it's on a cycle, it would be two levels from a homeowner, so if you live on your own, you'll be owner occupied. If you have another unit, and you're going to rent that full-time, so it keeps it off the short-term rentals, but it keeps it in the housing stock, you'll be able to have the same type of tax break as that. If you don't, and it's a short-term rental or something other than that, you're going to have a higher tax rate. And that's been in place now for three years, I think? The first, the first phase, not the one for the second house, but we had, the first, the first phase, not the one for the second house, but we had, they, they already passed it into the town, they already have the ordinance, they need the enabling legislation to move forward.
And what would be the correct, correct process of us implementing something like that?
Just a resolution, and we'll get the legislation put in.
Thank you.
Well, we still have, I mean, how, how long for requests for bills do we have? I know the speaker imposes deadlines on you, on you guys for your bills.
Not for town bills.
Not for town bills.
We can bring it up until...
We can go all the way up to the budget?
June 30th, if we're on it, July 1st.
Minute before we leave.
But we need, we need a resolution from the town, and I need something from you directing us to do it. Like the water bill?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. We just can't run off and do these things ourselves, or we can't put them in. Between Rep. McGaw and myself, we would only have six bills. I've already used one of mine, I think you've used one of yours, so we'd be able to put four. I count about 10, maybe 11 bills here. And I intend to start with a package. But just so you know, I looked at this two years ago, when I had Director Alvedi come before us on House Finance, and they were touting how Pawtucket was going to be having a huge building boom, they had 300 units, and I said, everyone has forgotten Tiverton, we're looking at probably 1,000 to 1,500, and you should see his eyes light up. But they haven't done it. And I came to this council and said the same thing, we need to start doing something about this. The time is gone. We now, we're, we're in extremely deep, we're going to need a lot of help, we're going to have to work very quickly. So we're going to need, when we get our stuff together, we're going to need response back from the town pretty quickly. Any of the bills that Rep. McGaw and I put in, will be headed with, by the town of Tiverton. So it should be easy to see.
Wonderful. And if we need special meetings, I'm sure for this, we will be available. Councilor Janik.
So Rep. Edwards, you did talk about the density bonuses. That is what is really killing us, because when they come in with the low, moderate income, we really can't say we don't want that, that many homes.
Again, you don't have to accept the density bonus. There's no requirement in the law that says density bonus isn't automatic.
That's, that's how we understood it previously.
I get that. I talked to the speaker about that this morning, he said it is not, it is not. He's going to show me exactly where in the legislation it is, so I can share it with the town.
Thank you.
But I called him specifically on that issue, because it seems to be the only one that's going to really mess up the whole world.
So that, that issue is, is what's driving our numbers up.
Exactly.
For the development of 250. I understand it, so I've been trying to follow this a lot, and the way I'm reading it and the way I understand it is that that does affect, I mean, you're saying it's not, but that does affect our total amount, and I don't see a way...
I'm not saying it affects your total amount.
I don't see a way that we can reject that at this point.
Well, you can reject the density. So if you can reject the density, you can reject the density bonus. That's how he explained it to me.
Can we take public comment from Trish?
We'll just have to find that out.
We've got some hands up out there.
I think Trish needs to land.
Well, since the, since the planning board chair was instrumental in putting together this list, I'd like to invite her up.
So we have been through this with our legal counsel, who has also been through this with other legal councils, and it is very clear, because the word shall is here, and I'm just going to read you one of them, there's a whole set of them for the number of density bonuses. For properties connected to public sewer and water, or eligible to be connected to public sewer and water based on written confirmation from each respective service provider, the density bonus for a project that provides at least 25% low and moderate income housing shall be at least five units per acre. There is no getting around the density bonus, it's laid out in state law.
That's your infrastructure issue right there. If you don't have the water, and you don't have the sewer, which, you don't have sewer everywhere, and if it's not readily available, and you have no intention of putting in, then it's unavailable.
Well, but here's the thing, there's a whole set of density bonuses, I just read you the one for public and sewer and water, there's a whole set of density bonuses for if you don't have public sewer and water.
I read them this weekend.
And if, if DEM, which we have no control over, if DEM approves those septic systems, we cannot override that. If the Department of Health says they can put in multiple public wells, we can't override that. So I realize the speaker wrote a lot of this stuff, but in practice, in the field, the way that the law is written, the way that our legal counsel is advising us, and they've talked to a whole bunch of the other attorneys who are doing land use, we have no choice on the density bonus whatsoever.
I disagree, and I'll, I'll get the information.
Trish, doesn't it also say that when it comes to the traffic, the emergency, the water runoff, that we also don't have control?
So anything that's in DEM's purview, so stormwater runoff, wetlands, anything that's in DEM's purview is in DEM's purview, and if they approve it, we have no authority to override it. When it comes to things like public safety, yes. If the fire department comes in and says, the way this building, these buildings are set up, we couldn't possibly get a ladder truck, you know, close enough, then we could say no, and the developer would have the opportunity to move the building. Or if there's no turnarounds for the fire truck, like they could say no. But these have to be identifiable, defensible, public safety issues.
Well, the first thing is, DEM's not going to allow like 1,500 new septic systems, number one, because they're just polluting the ground, and the ground in Tiverton does not have the drainage ability.
Agreed.
So what you're talking about is possibly having people put in small plants. I've put them in on projects, and they're not cheap. They're very effective, but they are not cheap. So you're, that's something your planning board might want to start looking at, forcing these people to do the right thing, which is put in small plants.
So we've already been advised that whatever DEM approves, DEM approves. We have no authority, and the solicitor's shaking his head, to tell the DEM that we don't agree with whatever they're approving.
You can contest it, and DEM will have to prove that it's, it's going to work.
Well, they might have to, but they still have the approval authority.
I know, we can't just throw our hands up on this and just say, while the state's shoving us, you're, you're not going to put something in that's going to fit 50 feet.
Then given the opportunity, then given the opportunity to promulgate rules and regulations for this kind of development, so they can only work off what they have in front of them, number one. And number two, that doesn't necessarily address our density issue, right? So it's a...
I agree, Trish.
That, that's the tough part.
I will get you what I, the speaker told me this morning, that infrastructure, 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 and that'll take care of even the density bonuses. So I'm, I'm going to see him tomorrow.
You can ask him tomorrow, but, but as of right now, we have, our understanding under the law, and as I said, as we've been advised by our land use council, and the Rhode Island Statewide Planning Association, which has already also looked at this too, that we don't have any control over the density unless it's an identifiable public safety issue, like the fire trucks can't get there, or there's a known, you know, we report, listen, there's a, there's a known dump on that property that, you know, is contaminated, but that's the deal.
Even, even with the fire truck situation, they can just build their roads to what's acceptable.
True.
Turnarounds, cul-de-sacs, so I, I, I don't think we could hang our hat on a, an emergency service type thing to say.
But we do very much appreciate our state legislators coming and hearing about this and taking our recommendations. We know that it's a long-ass list, but I think that they're ideas for getting us in the right direction, so we, we really appreciate your coming and, and looking at those items. And I'm especially happy to hear that some of them have actually struck accord with you, and, and you might be able to do something, because it'd be a big help for us.
Yeah, the building permit issue is, for me, is a really big thing, as I said, the money talks.
Yeah, because...
And you're putting a permit in, doesn't require it, but the building permit does.
A 12-year approval process before you actually have to build something is, is pretty long. And there's no penalty if you don't ever build it. There's no campsite.
Thank you. Any other?
So just one more thing.
Councilor Janik.
It's, it's just really hard for us to get to a 10% low, moderate income housing when you're adding hundreds of houses and only, you know, only 20% of them are low, moderate. You're just, you know, this number's going higher, and you just can't catch up.
You're chasing your tail, basically.
Yeah, I understand, you had to put 3,000 units in to get your 10%.
Right.
Again, the math doesn't work.
But that also adds additional units that are not, so the percentage will, will just take forever to get there, so.
So our, our goal is going to be to get your already existing low and moderate income housing, just like your trailer parks, your mobile homes, your pre-manufactured, to count first. We're going to go after the densities, and we're going to confirm what Rep. McGaw talked about with the infrastructure issues.
We're counting the 50% on any...
But that, again, is not going to last forever.
You're going to, you will reach that number, and then it'll continue. You'll be chasing your tail, so. Okay, thank you.
The bill number, the Senate bill number is 502, so your legal counsel can review it and ensure that that's the proper mechanism that you're looking for.
One of the, one of the pieces of feedback, and obviously, some of you know it, is working with the other cities and towns through the league, is that while Tiverton is unique, and obviously the, back to the presentation Trish had done, and you talked about those five projects, and maybe there's more that are going to come, other cities and towns will have similar kinds of issues, not to the degree that I think Tiverton's going to experience. Obviously, the MVTA coming to Fall River, amongst other things, makes it very attractive to live in Fall River as opposed to somewhere else. Some cities and towns aren't going to have the same kind of issue, because some of the land is not as available as it is here.
Other towns are already having this. I mean, you've got Coventry, you've got a couple other towns on the east, on the west side, they're already experiencing the same thing, so we're not alone. We're not living in Providence, but we are definitely not alone.
Are they having the same numbers? Like, we're at 1,000.
Only because of the railhead. So we've got, we've got that problem with the MVTA coming in from Boston, so it's extremely easy to get from Tiverton to Fall River. You could probably bike to where the train is. So that's one of the reasons why we're seeing an increase, but other towns are seeing increases that are exponential for them as well.
Well, because like Johnston, Coventry, they're concerned, because they have like a half dozen or a dozen, and that they don't like that, but we're talking 1,000. It's a, it's a huge, huge number.
I'm very aware.
I know you are.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So one, one thing I took out of this was the opportunity for the homestead, homestead tax reduction for owner-occupied residents in town, which I think a lot of the community would love. So I know it's not on the agenda here, but what do we need to do? Give advice to the solicitor, or submit a new agenda request to has a resolution put together for that?
We'll need a resolution that we'll vote on, and then we'll send it to the delegation and ask them to put the bill in for us. As a result.
Basically, it's allowing you to do a homestead exemption, not the specifics about it, you will determine the specifics subsequent to that.
Correct.
It's not, you're going to do this, this, and this, it's enabling you to have a homestead exemption, not the, not the particular...
Okay. So again, do we need to advise the solicitor to write that resolution?
Mr. Solicitor's already writing.
All right.
He knows.
Thanks, Mike.
And then your other bill that you submitted, the charter ratification, that was going to be up for a vote tomorrow, I believe.
You passed the meeting last week.
Wonderful. And that's for the financials for the school, okay. Excellent. Any other questions from the council for our delegation? The public comments section's next, so. With that, all right.
Just keep some handle up to the alarm to get...
That's, that's fine. Representatives, senators, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. We appreciate the willingness to, to come and speak with the council, and I'm sure you're going to get ambushed by some people on your way out.
No, we're going to have a meeting on the 24th, and we're going to let people come, and they can talk to us right then and there. One of the members from the Captain Circle...
Sandra Van Hoff, 254 Fairwood Drive. A lot of what I was going to say got answered by our representatives and senators. I had questions about trying to encourage them to speed up and correct the mess that has been made, so they seem to be addressing that. I was also going to speak to our local officials and try to encourage you to just say no and deny some of these. They seem to present that that's something that can happen, so I'm not going to go into detail about that. I had a fourth page thing written here. And I will address my personal concerns, because I live, I'm in a butter, to Friendship Farms, and we have some serious concerns about that development, and I will be at their meeting, but I think tonight, some things got answered, they have calmed maybe my nerves a little, but not completely, but we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Harry Rogers.
All my questions have been answered.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Robert Chavez. Chavz, my apologies.
That's all good.
That'll be the last time I get your name wrong, though.
That's all good. Seven's a lot.
All right. Basically, what's happened is...
Just name an address for the...
My name is Robert Chavz, 278 Captain Circle, in the town of Tiverton, and I don't want to see it become the city of Tiverton, and that's kind of seems like where we're going. They're trying to put up these little ghettos everywhere, and that's basically what they're going to turn into. Maybe Black Rock will come in, or Vanguard, and buy them all up, and then we're stuck with who knows what. Now, I know in the past few years, the federal government has let anybody in here, and we don't know who, and they just flooded this country, and then they... don't know who, and they just flooded this country and then they shoved this agenda. All the Democrat-controlled states, like Massachusetts and Rhode Island, they send these people here, then they try to force the town to swallow this. I don't think that's right. And when the senator says that we can phase it out over 10 years, that's like telling me you can knock off my teeth out now or knock one out a month for the next several years. Either way, my appearance will be changed forever and my character, and that's what you're doing to this town. You are the town council. When the state tries to shove something at you, are you going to fight back? Are you going to say, oh, why do we even have a town council? What are those seats worth? Are they worth anything or are they just nice to look at? Now, sorry for my attitude, but I'm seeing a state try to shove thing onto it, trying to shove something onto a town that is simply not feasible, and you're greatly going to devalue everybody's property in that area. But my taxes won't go down, and if I try to sell my house now, right down the tubes will be the value of it. So I highly recommend that you fight this as well as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Zachary, I am going to mispronounce this.
Garrett.
Garrett, okay.
Zachary Garrett, 30 Edmund Lane. Basically, what I was about to say, he pretty much answered, but I wrote to the speaker in an email, and he was actually nice enough to call me, which was surprising, and he pretty much said the same thing. Whatever you guy, I don't know if there's a disconnect here where everybody thinks their hands are tied or whatnot, but he strongly suggested if you guys feel a certain way, fight it. He mentioned Johnston, he mentioned Narragansett, they were fighting it. You guys are not as powerless as you think. He said, you know, he's not telling from Warwick, he's not sitting in Warwick telling Tiverton how to, where what needs to go where, how much needs to go where, who's doing what, you know? And he didn't mention, out of the 47 bills that were passed on this, he doesn't recall one, one Tiverton representative being there. There's going to be another 12 or 13, so maybe, maybe somebody should show up and actually, you know, speak up for our town and just do what everybody was voted in for, and it's all we can ask for, so just if you guys actually, you know, care, please fight and don't just, don't just, you know, you're not powerless, so thank you.
Thank you. A.G. Miranda.
Before I start my public statement, I'd like to question what was said here tonight because a lot of people, somebody said, oh, it's going to be up to the town, it's going to be up to the code of forces, it's going to be up to us, whether we're going to accept these things or not. But according to Chris's, Trish's presentation last week, was it? She said that the state is going to appoint an independent, some subcontractor, somebody or something like that, who's going to make the determinations, and the town is not going to have any say in this.
Oh, yeah, just for clarification.
What's the story?
So we hired an independent body to count the number of units, I think that might be what you're referring to.
No, any of this, the town is not going to have a say in any of this as far as making these decisions on what size is this and what size is that, and if there's enough water, if there's not enough water, what was said tonight, we're going to try to do this and that, and I'm all for it, but I'm just saying that that conflicts with what she said in her presentation.
Counsel, come in.
So I don't disagree with you, but if I'm to be transparent and open, all this information that we just received, we just received it the same time everybody else received it. This is all news to me. I've been following this closely. I've been working with Trish and everything that we've read and been told and backed up by the planning and the zoning lawyer has said that the state has total control over this.
Right.
So if, even if we wanted to go and fight it, it's going to be, I don't think it's that anybody here doesn't want to fight it.
Right.
But what, the information that we're gathering right now is that the state, I'll even go as far as this is what the speaker wants.
Yeah.
So all this information that I received tonight is all brand new. We were told even down to the traffic studies, the emergency services, the water runoff, that we had no control over that.
Exactly.
Just like Ms. Hilton said, once DEM has, gives it the stamp.
Right.
I'm not an engineer, who am I to go around and change it? So I'm sure that everybody here, and Trish, and our lawyers will be looking into all this new information because it's a whole lot of new information that we received tonight. They're making it sound like we're just going to major, uh, magic wand and stop all of this. I don't see that happening with the state and what they're telling us. So we will fight and go as far as we can, but this is all new information tonight.
Right, well, I wish, well, whoever came up with those statements, I wasn't, I couldn't see who was speaking, but it was contrary to what Trish's presentation, I just wanted to bring that up.
I don't disagree with you.
Personally, as far as my own statement goes, I approached the Tiverton council, the prior administration a couple of years ago, to help me with my problems in my backyard, as you well know, some of you. And there were two statutes that they didn't want to enforce. The administration, the building administrations made up a lie saying it wasn't in town and so forth and so on, so why am I bringing this up now? Well, the reason is, these were two statutes, and the town spent a lot of money with y'all law firm fighting me in court over this. But why I'm bringing this up, why it's relevant is because in the court, y'all law firm said, brought up case law in their arguments in the, in the state that said it's all discretionary. The town does not have to do it if they don't want to do it. So if they didn't want to enforce the laws in my case, why does the town have to go along with the state laws in this case?
I really don't know what you're referring to.
Well, what I'm saying is this case law...
It was different.
So just, as a point of clarification, Mr. Miranda, so just for everybody at home, right? Because the state is a sovereign entity. We in Tiverton are not, right? We're a municipal corporation. If the state wanted tomorrow, they could waive some legislation. All of us are gone, this is unincorporated territory, you know, we roll up to the county. So what we have control over, you know, the ordinances and that sort of thing, sure, that something, something along those lines could be discretionary from the town, but we cannot tell the state that we're not going to enforce state law. And when we are all elected, we swear an oath of office to the laws of the land, meaning the ordinances in town, the state, and the federal.
Well, the previous administration did that very thing. They said they're not going to enforce these statutes.
And I'm not here to adjudicate that.
And their argument was based on prior case law. So what I'm saying judicially, there's, there's case laws in this state that said that if the town doesn't want to do it, they don't have to do it. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, and I appreciate your input, and I will certainly ask the solicitor for some clarification after the meeting.
He's probably well aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last up.
Those two are town commissions. They work in conjunction, but they are distinct. The other entity that seems to be referred to is the land trust. Tiverton does have a not-for-profit land trust that also works in conjunction with the Tiverton Open Space Commission. Other organizations that are involved, often partnering with the town, are DEM, Tiverton, the Nature Conservancy, the land trust together, Audubon, and anywhere else that grants can be sought to protect open land in our town. So I rapidly went on the websites, town's website, as well as the website of the Tiverton Land Trust, because I think it would be helpful in reviewing this proposal to actually have some specific information about the specific roles that those various entities have and the functions they serve, both in terms of our town, as well as nonprofit, public, private organizations. Lastly, I, I looked into what's happening in Little Compton because there's reference to the agricultural conservancy that is there, and that is very specifically for the preservation of agricultural lands. It doesn't have multi-pronged purpose. And lastly, I guess there's one, it, I don't, I guess I did bring that to you too, but my request is that if I give this to Joan, she will make copies of it and distribute it to the members so that at least there's a little current information based on the websites before you, as you begin to review a proposal for a Tiverton Conservation Trust. It sounded like there was redundancy and that, in fact, those functions were already very successfully met because this town has preserved over 1,000 acres of land, and I think that everyone in this room should be really grateful for all the dedicated people who made that a possibility. So I will give you this, Joan.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your attendance.
Thank you very much. All right. Jeanne, you're still taking notes, right? Okay. Joan just went off to go do that. All right, so there wasn't another list of, that's it? Okay. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you to those folks that were here for that tonight as far as the, all of the development and stuff like that. It's clear to me that the speaker wrote a whole bunch of legislation that I don't even think he read himself, so hopefully that gets clarified.
Thank you. All right, so next up is appointments and resignations. We have one, Harbor Commission, nine-member board, two-year terms, one vacancy for the planning board member. We have a proposal for Stephen Clark, 31 Peaceful Way, request appointment, term ending 7/15/2025. Mr. Solicitor, given that Stephen Clark is the appointee for the planning board, I don't believe we need to interview, correct?
Correct.
All right. So we did receive a statement from the planning board chair in relation to this applicant, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to appoint Stephen Clark to the Harbor Commission for the planning board seat.
Motion to appoint Stephen Clark to the vacancy, to the Harbor Commission from the planning board.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Next up, border licensing. Arthur Brown, 76 Robin Drive, requesting approval of a private detective license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. This is not your first time before this body, correct?
This is my first time before this body. I'd like to say good evening to all, all council members. My name is Arthur Brown, 76 Robin Drive, Tiverton, Rhode Island.
Oh, let's, we'll give you, we're going to give you one second because people are filtering out.
It's going to be a minute.
Yeah. My apologies, sir.
He was here last week. You were here last week, or last meeting?
I was here?
Yeah, that's why you thought this was not...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Now I think it's quieted down, but by all means, please continue.
Again, good evening, council members. My name is Arthur Brown, 76 Robin Drive, Tiverton, Rhode Island. I am a recent resident up here in the state of Rhode Island and especially here in Tiverton. My intention is to, you know, acquire a license to work as a private detective within the state of Rhode Island, but I have to go through the licensing board here. My intention is under the 2024 Rhode Island Detective Act, General, 2024 Rhode Island General Laws, Title V, Business and Professions, Chapter V, that's V, Private Detective Act, to work under the laws and rules and regulations locally, state, and federal.
All right. So any questions from the council for the applicant?
Council President, I would like to make a motion to approve Mr. Brown's request for a private detective license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, of course.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Here, Counsel Janik.
Very impressive resume.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
All right.
Thank you for all you do, Mr. Brown.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I propose congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
That was easy, right? All right, next up, general business. Chris Clarendon requesting status on the transfer station closer, closure of landfill and the Fogland Beach Oversight Committee. Mr. Clarendon, thank you.
Thank you, I'll be as brief as possible. I'm actually here on behalf of the litter committee, which I sit on, and I'm just gathering information on some of this, which is past history. Just want to know the town council's position or information on the status of the transfer station and the closure of the landfill. Those are the two priorities. Fogland Beach Oversight Committee, that's, that's not quite as, as pertinent to what we're seeking here. So if we could start with the, the status of the transfer station, Joan, I think you told me that...
It's a recycle center.
Yes, very...
It's very different than a transfer station.
Okay, the recycle center is up and running. Well...
Temporarily, yes.
Temporarily.
On a five-year lease right now.
Okay, can you, can you distinguish between the two, between a transfer station and a recycling center? I gather they're two different things. We're mostly concerned at the litter committee with the transfer station, such as they have in Little Compton where you can bring things like defunct lawn mowers, white ware, like old refrigerators, things like this. The alternative to Tiverton residents is to have to drive things like that to Johnston at this point, as I, if, as far as I know, unless the town council has different information for me here, or DPW has different information. As far as I know, if you have large items that you need to dispose of, there's no place to do it in town.
So, Mr. President...
Yeah. Mr. Administrator, please take away.
So up on Progress Way in the industrial park, it's three days a week, I believe, but we do take plastics, recyclables, white goods, e-waste, and the white goods, like an old air conditioner and old refrigerator, they dispose of that for a fee. So that currently takes place in Tiverton, three days a week.
Okay.
Correct.
Lawn mowers, scrap steel.
Scrap steel.
Yes.
You don't force to go to Johnston to dispose of those.
Mattress, mattresses.
You can dispose of mattress at the recycling center?
Yeah.
Quick, yeah. Dry mattresses, obviously, you can't take something soaking wet that's been out in the backyard, but yes.
Okay, I don't recall reading, because DPW puts out their sheet yearly this time of year, basically, it just came out. I don't remember seeing anything about mattresses in the DPW sheet or, or large items. For instance, let's say a defunct lawnmower. Can you take it to the recycling center?
Yes, I believe so, sir.
Yes.
Yeah. The DPW director's in the room.
Yeah.
Director Rogers, would you mind?
Maybe, maybe Chris, as part of the litter committee, maybe you could, maybe you could head over there and meet, meet with them.
The podium is new, the microphones are not.
Just trying to like...
Yeah, I'm just curious about, you know, large items.
All right, so, Rick.
Director Rogers, please. Maybe, maybe come to this one? I don't know. It's probably easier. That way, we're not moving it around.
Yes, thank you. Recyclable items are allowed, some with a fee, as Chief said, some are free. Bulk items, like sofas, couches, no, but recyclable items, yes, but they have to...
I've got a lawnmower.
If it's correctly drained and is metal, then we take it. Electronics, we take.
Sure.
So there are lists that we hand out every year, plus it's on the website.
So let's concentrate for just a quick moment on bulk items. Can you give me a classic example of a bulk item, for instance?
Yeah, couches, sofas.
Okay. If I have a couch that I want to get rid of?
Yes.
I have to drive it to Johnston, correct? Or... Or what, what are the alternatives there?
Yeah, not necessarily. And to expand on what the president said, mattresses are allowed if they're clean, dry, no bedbugs, when they arrive at the recycle center. Otherwise, they're trash and we do not accept them. That would be a bulk item. But just to refresh everybody's memory, a few years ago, the town went through multiple years of multiple public meetings, solicited town input via social media, based on social media and other inputs received, and on the cost for design, construction, permitting, maintenance, it was voted to have a recycle center only, not a transfer station. Transfer stations accept trash, recycle centers do not. Recycle centers are not under DEM Office of Waste Management, transfer stations are.
Okay, uh, so there are no plans for a, a transfer station?
At this point in time, there are no, there are no plans for a transfer station.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director, I appreciate your time. Closure of the landfill, uh, I think, Joan, you had mentioned that, uh, the completion of the closure of the landfill is dependent on federal funds? Is that, do I have that right?
Mr. Administrator.
So we put in for a USDA grant for approximately $2 million. So we were fortunate enough to get awarded 1.416 million.
Okay.
Um, given the change of the administration, a lot of the grant funding has been placed on hold. So we, I'm still fairly confident, I was talking to the solicitor today, that USDA has kind of earmarked the money for us, but I've told the solicitor and the council, I won't be comfortable until it's in Tiverton's bank account. So, because with that, we'd still be responsible for that 1.4 million plus. So I hope to have an answer within the next 30 days.
Great, and, um, as far as what's left to be done there, is there, there's a great deal left?
I think the only thing that is pending is, um, fencing and security.
I see.
But anything else has pretty much been completed.
And there's also, that, some of that money will cover monitoring fees?
Yes.
Yes. It's gotta be monitored for so many years, for the rest of its life.
I was just gonna say, in perpetuity, it has to be monitored.
Right, and, um, there can't be any plans for that parcel of property because.
Well, I, I wouldn't say that. So there is definitely things that we'd be looking into preliminarily, but right now, and I can say this, there are other communities like Coventry and Cranston that have used their brown fields for different things, such as solar fields or alternative energy. So once we're fully done with the closure of the landfill, that would be something that we potentially could look into, um, but right now, we just want to close it, kind of settle the books on the landfill before we move forward.
Okay, so that's a multi-year.
Absolutely.
Right, okay, great, okay. I'll forget and waive the Fogland Beach Oversight Committee, that was a Oversight Committee that I sat on many years ago, and, um, I think it has bitten the dust long, long ago, but it has, it may, maybe we could bring it back because it may, um, have some, uh, impact on the new parking ordinances down at Fogland Beach that the, the council is talking about, uh, for fishermen. Uh, Denise, you may, you may remember this.
Yeah, that's on hold right now.
It's on hold.
I don't know if you want to explain it.
Yeah.
It's coming up, but it's not.
What it's targeted at.
It's very different than what was first proposed.
It's not, yeah, it's not what was originally talked about.
But it will come back to town council at some point in the future.
Tonight.
Tonight. I didn't see it on the agenda.
Uh, items N.
It's been a little different.
N, O, right, and.
N and O.
N and O.
Maybe.
Yep, N and O.
Request to advertise.
Great, okay.
And that's just a request to advertise for those, so we have to satisfy the advertising period and then we will, um, do the public hearing thereafter.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, next up, uh, Mr. Janik, Charter Review Commission, update on the work performed to date, schedule, and intent to solicit public input and discussion and possible vote to fund the videotaping of their meetings.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I will be recusing.
Okay.
You don't need to.
He's asking for money.
Oh, oh, not for himself, not for himself. Yeah, okay. I forgot about the money thing.
Get the road.
All right, good evening, thank you for your time, I appreciate giving us the opportunity to speak here tonight. Um, the Charter Review Commission is made up of nine members that were duly elected. The majority, um, in, were on the ballot, but some were elected as part of a write-in, uh, basis during the last election. The members include myself as the chair, and I don't know what I was thinking when I accepted that, but here I am again. Diane Sanders, our vice chair, Rob Coulter is the secretary. The other members include Ellie Burns, Nancy Driggs, Donna Edwards, Nancy Mello, Dennis Milborn, excuse me, and Jerry Larkin. A well-rounded group of civic-minded individuals, and we are looking forward to having and putting our best foot forward in, in taking a review of the charter provisions and what we might be able to do to help the community of the town as we go forward. We've got our meetings scheduled, we've set a schedule for the first and Thursday, Tuesday of each month until November. First Tuesdays, we're gonna be at the, the library at 6:00 PM. The third Tuesdays, we're gonna be at the senior center at 6:00 PM. Uh, we've also started to videotape our meetings, and the request for funding that was mentioned earlier is there. I've got, uh, an individual who's willing to do it for $50 a meeting, so I would ask for not to exceed of $800 through the end of the year for these meetings. Any meetings that are canceled, of course, will save money as far as that goes. Shortly, we'll be distributing, I'll be giving to, uh, the town administrator, a link for the boards and commissions to be able to submit their proposals for charter changes. We're also gonna be, uh, sending, I have a letter to the editor prepared to go to the newspapers, giving the public an opportunity, links to do that, as well as a QR code if they can print it in the, in the papers. Those are the plans, we're looking to get as much input as we can, work our way through all of that. One of the things that I didn't have on my list that was mentioned, and I've been cautioned not to bring it up, but, and I mean, maybe forward via, in front of you again, discussing the role that the council and the charter will have in this upcoming review, and I was brought to.
Mr. President, I'd like to object to this piece, it's not on the agenda.
Mr. Solicitor. Okay. If you would, would mind deviating, sorry.
Not a problem.
I won't talk about it.
So at this point, we won't talk about that, but I will, uh, see you again at some point, we do need to have this discussion, and I'll put it on the, uh, agenda properly. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Mike, I have a question.
Yes.
Counsel Perry.
Mr. Janik, what I'd like to see, um, on this committee is, for every change you make in the charter, that.
Oppose.
Oppose.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're an advisory committee.
Yep.
That you identify why you made the change, and above whatever change you make, identify why you made that change.
So Dave, when the links go out, you'll see in there that we've, uh, we've put in there the, the charter section to be identified, the impact, what costs might be associated with any of the check proposals that are coming through. We'll be reviewing also for any that are competing clauses or changes that we might have to, uh, review as far as that goes, and you'll see all of that when the time comes that you're reviewing our work.
And maybe, instead of giving us all the changes at the end, maybe we could get, if you do 10 changes, maybe you could present them to us, so at least we could get a look at them, before looking at them at, you know, one year, I think we had 99, 99 changes all at the end of the year.
Yeah, you're right. It, uh, I, I was not a member of that committee, and I cast no aspersions on anybody, but it was a significant amount of changes. They culled it down to a, uh, a more reasonable number, but still at this point, the commission we've spoken about, somewhere we'd like to be in the 10 to 12 resolution changes, charter changes that we might submit.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to vote funding the videotaping of their meetings for $50 per meeting with a cap of $800, per Mr. Janik's, uh, note.
Where would that come out of?
We need a second first before discussion.
Second.
Okay.
Council contingency.
Mr. Administrator, where could we find $800? Council contingency?
Yeah, it would be, I, I want to talk about that the next.
Me, too.
Okay. All right. So, um.
Do we have a discussion on it, or after the motion?
Motion's made, seconded, Counselor Komino.
So, um, it seems to me that we have several boards and commissions doing video recordings. Maybe it's time we look at one company or what to do this.
Usually it.
It's generally.
I, I understand, but like, if we need to go and start looking to get somebody to come in and take care of all our boards and commissions, then I think that's what we need to do, instead of having, I watched a school committee meeting a couple weeks ago, and they had videotaping it with a cellphone. I just think we need to do it professional and get somebody in here to do all our boards and commissions.
The school committee usually has their own.
I understand that, but they didn't, so.
Yeah.
We would have control over it, and then we can have a company to come in and do all our boards and commissions.
I, I like that idea, but it's gonna be way more than $50 a meeting.
I agree.
I can tell you.
21st century, ladies.
Counselor Demidaris.
We looked into this before, Craig, and it's very difficult to find a company that'll do it. The, um, boys we have that do it now do, do the very best they can, but we looked into this before, and quite frankly, we couldn't find anyone that would do it. So it's a little bit more difficult than it sounds, and I think it will be more expensive, too, if you have that budget.
Okay. So I appreciate the input, thank you. Might I suggest that, uh, we'll see the budget, uh, transfer from whichever item, we're gonna move the $800 from, from the administrator on the next council agenda, but, uh, pending that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Janik.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Bailey, discussion impossible vote to approve budget transfers, $100,000 from account 10216859, council contingency, to account 33105104, overtime. Mr. Administrator or Mr. Chief, whoever would like to speak on this.
Um, I'm going to defer to Counselor Demidaris, we had a conversation about this today, and I also spoke with the fire chief. Counselor Demidaris had a conversation with the treasurer, knowing that the council contingency funds have been put into place to cover the pay raises for all the public safety in DPW. So what, I'll let the counselor make her motion to amend, uh, the request, which I know the fire chief and myself have no objection to.
Counselor Demidaris.
I was very concerned with taking from the council contingency at this point, because all the raises, and that's not only raises, that's benefits, that's vacation time, all of it, we really, really carefully try not to overspend or at least stay within there. I talked to Denise, and she told me that she's not totally comfortable yet, uh, because now that you're fully staffed, she has to figure out like what, what your salary, what your payroll would be. She told me how many more payrolls you have, and she just wants to make sure, either two weeks from now or at another meeting, she can come back and say, yes, he can get another $50,000. I looked, um, she told me in February, your overtime is, um, 17.5, um, and she has $23,000 left in there. So I figured if we gave you 50, that'd cover you for at least a month.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and not only that, but you're fully staffed now, so I'm one.
Almost fully staffed. We have one in the academy and one out IODs, but on the roster, we are at 32. I just want, I just want to be clear that we, you know.
Yeah, and I do realize that once the summer comes, this overtime gets.
And there's all the, a few of the things that we can't forecast, uh, per the contract, at the end of June, when the fiscal year ends, they get paid off for any unused comp time.
Right, that's what Denise said.
We can't calculate that right now because, unless we just figured everybody had the max. And also, another change in the tentative agreement was, uh, firefighters could cash in unused vacation time rather than being forced to use it and create overtime.
I was there, yeah.
So we got a couple of variables that, we're, we're actually doing our own analysis right now, uh, we're working through that with, with the fire chief's assistant, and we were hoping to get something to the town administrator very soon.
Well, I just called her to make sure she was comfortable with that $100,000. She said she had just heard about it in the morning, and she would feel better if we only gave about 50.
Fair enough.
And then she'll come back to us in two weeks to a month with the, with the right calculations. She thinks it's doable, but she's very cautious because we were really, really there at that line.
I understand.
How many payrolls is left?
So, before we, before we dive into further discussion, Counselor Demidaris, do you have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we give $50,000 to the overtime account from council contingency, and revisit this within, um, two weeks to a month, after the treasurer has made sure that this is gonna work.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Counselor Komino.
Counsel President.
Counsel Perry.
I'm looking at the January 31st contingency fund, and there's $747,000 left in there.
Yeah, but I, I know.
Is there money going somewhere else?
No, so Counselor Perry, because the, um, prior council was in contract negotiations with, um, not only we're finalizing DPW, but we're also finalizing, we're working with police and fire, we set aside in the last budget, knowing that those two contracts were coming up, um, dollars to essentially cover the increases in raises and that sort of thing, so, um, that's ultimately where those dollars would be pulled from.
And as you know, Dave, pretty significant raises. Before Chris left.
I took her over.
All right, but before Chris left.
Yes.
I don't know if you know this part, though, he, he left Denise a detailed, a graph of what he thought we were gonna use.
What he thought we were gonna have.
Have you, yeah, and she said that she'll give that to us. I think the chief, um, town minister, chief, the town minister.
Okay, Counselor Komino.
So, the $50,000 will give us five weeks, but we get paid every two weeks, so.
We will be revisiting this on the next, the next, the next agenda.
Yeah, and you have to keep in mind, this $27,000 are already in there that we haven't used.
And we also have a meeting, uh, essentially back-to-back weeks, so, because of the calendar change. So, all right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Director Rogers, discussion impossible, discussion impossible vote to award the contract for specified recreational facility and turf management services bids for calendar year 2025 to Landscaping Services Incorporated, DBA DePont's Landscaping, in an amount not to exceed $63,700. Director Rogers, if you could add some color for us.
Just, just remodel. Yes, we would like to award the contract for the specified recreational facility and turf management services for calendar year 2025 to Landscaping Services Inc., DBA DePont's Landscaping. A correction I would make is that it is for that whole title, but it's the mowing and trimming that should be listed if you choose to use a figure of 63,700, because the contract also has additional items that may be used if the town so chooses, and they're listed under additional services. So the mowing and trimming services, the bid is 63,700. So I would not want it to read as it does now, award contract for the whole title, which is specified recreational facility and turf management service bids for calendar year 2025, in an amount not to exceed 63,700. So 63,700 represents only the mowing and trimming. There are alternative items that could be done if the ch, uh, town chose. For instance, blonde infield mix, rollers, lime, preventive, uh, preventive maintenance, and that's all listed in the bid sheet that was distributed.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion from any members of the council? Counselor Janik.
Yes, I'll make a motion. I have a question, too, though. Um, but I'll make a motion that we award the contract for mowing and trimming.
Nope, if I may, it's, the contract is for specified recreational facility and turf[1732.82] Nope, if I may, the contract is for specified recreational facility and turf management services bids for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
This, this bid is terrible. I just gotta just say that. This, this, this bid doesn't define what they're gonna do besides mowing and cutting grass. Does it say about blowing the grass off the track? All, it gives us a great list of all their equipment. It's not defining what they are being paid to do.
We don't have a motion, we don't have a motion yet, so we can't have a discussion.
That is a fair point. Counselor Janik, you'd like to make a motion?
I will make the motion. I have questions also. To award the contract specified recreational facility and turf management surfaces, services for calendar year twenty twenty-five to landscaping services, Inc., DBA De Pont's landscaping for the amount of sixty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
That's a not to exceed amount, correct?
Not to exceed amount.
Do I have a second?
I will second for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made in seconded.
So now that I can have discussion, the same thing I'm gonna read you. This is not giving us a definition of what they're doing. We have no list of what one through twelve is. We have a great list of their equipment, but I, I don't know what they're cutting, what they're weed whacking. Does that include blowing off our tracks, our recreational areas? I just think this is a poorly written bid sheet. Doesn't give us enough information.
Mr. President, I do apologize. There were bid specifications and I did not include it in the packet that goes through all of the items that you're, you're questioning. So it was in the bid specs that was advertised and this is just the bid sheet that comes back based upon those bid specifications. If you wanna copy those bid specifications, I can get them copied for you.
Please.
Joan, do those specs state how often they're going to mow? You know, the frequency, are there accountabilities? Okay.
I'd have to get the specs.
Counsel Janik.
That would be my question too, because last year, Rick, there were a lot of issues with the sporting teams. They were doing their own mowing. You know, I know they do their own lines and everything for the fields, but they, they were mowing the fields themselves because they weren't coming often enough. And I know there was rain and all of that, but they just, they weren't doing it enough. I don't think that they had enough people to do the jobs that we needed done, so.
Counsel, Counsel Janik, given that we're waiting for the specs, I think it would be proper to lay this item or take a motion to lay this item on the table. We'll pick it back up after we go through the next item while we wait for the clerk to get the specs.
I would recommend that we table this to the next meeting because we should be able to. Hold on, because we can't do that yet, we already have motions. But the reason for that is I was well involved in this last year and the former administrator said that it is clear that we need to rewrite the contract. There was no penalties in that contract. Grass from April through July was supposed to be cut twice a week and it wasn't getting done. There were no penalties to protect the town. Essentially, that vendor got a check every other week and it didn't matter what he did. So I will not approve anything and De Pont's a reputable company, but I will not approve anything until we see that contract.
Motion to table?
Motion to table, but I think we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion to table.
Second. Just, just to be clear, your motion is to continue this item until the next meeting?
Correct, yeah, correct.
Tables the next meeting.
Just so we can get more information and see the contract itself.
Do I need to pull my motion?
Nope. Motion's been made and seconded. There is no discussion on this, so, all in favor?
Of tabling.
Correct. None opposed? All right. Madam Clerk, thank you for rushing to make those copies and now we'll, we'll have them for next meeting.
Rick, is there a certain date you need, is there a certain date you need this by? Is, is two weeks put out or?
The mowing starts in April, the first or second week.
Okay.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is Director Rogers, discussion and possible vote to apply for loans program from Clean Water State Revolving Funds, that's CWSRF and Municipal Roads and Bridge Revolving Fund, MRB, MRBRF. Director Rogers, if you'd provide some color behind this request.
All right, so there's two items on there, as you mentioned, John. The Municipal Road and Bridge Revolving Fund. DPW has no recommendations for anything for that. That's a loan program. You have to pay it back. There's no loan forgiveness on principal. We already participate in the RIDOT Municipal Road and Bridge Program, which is also now called Road Restore. That's a reimbursement program.
Wonderful. So recommendation from the administrator would be to apply for these and then I'm assuming we would, as a council, have to vote on accepting if we are accepted? Wonderful. All right, so do we have a motion to apply for loans through CWSRF and MRBRF?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? Counsel Commendo?
So roads and bridge projects, we have our own roads and bridges that we take care of?
Correct.
Do we have a list?
I believe the director has a list of all of those, correct?
Yes, of the roads, yes.
The roads, the bridges, sorry.
The bridges?
Yeah, we have like.
Like the small bridge going down to Fogland, you know, Pond Bridge Road, that little.
That the state has the list.
Just as an example.
Of what'll be bridges in the town, not counting things like culverts and drain pipes.
Okay, so we don't actually own the bridges that, that take care of by the state, correct?
It, it's an excellent question, but it's a gray area. For instance, Nonquit Bridge is on Pond Bridge Road.
Right.
That's a town road. The state is rebuilding that.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, I don't.
It's confusing.
It is a gray area.
I, I know it's a gray area, but if we're gonna pay money back and the state's gonna take care of it, what?
We, this is, if we're going to apply for a loan, we, we would have to vote to actually accept the loan proceeds, so this will come back before us.
Right.
Administrator's pretty, I just don't wanna waste his time.
No, no, go ahead, Director.
But as I was saying, there's two things listed here. One is the MRBP and one is the Clean Water, the CWSRF.
Yep.
DPW has no recommendations for the Municipal Road and Bridge Revolving Fund. If you want to submit an application for a loan, DPW has no objection, but we have no recommendations for such. Clean Water State Revolving Fund is different. We submit every year what they call a PPL, a Project Priority List, that's DEM. We have listed that in the past. We did so again this year. If somebody wants a loan, then you have to use the PPL to be able to apply for it. We've already listed ours. If there's anything else that people want that can be added to the list, then you apply for the loan. And again, those are both due for the PPL and the, if you want to apply for a loan, that's by this twenty-eighth of this month.
Okay.
So DPW's already listed theirs and sent them into the state. All right, so. Somebody wants to add some?
Yep.
Go right ahead.
And if any councilor has anything to add, I believe we would direct those requests to the administrator and to the director. All right, any further discussion on this topic? Nope, all in favor? None opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rogers. Next item is interim town administrator, discussion and possible vote to award the contract for handicapped accessible walkway and door replacement with lighting and heated walkway in the amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just as a refresher, this was a project that was approved with gaming revenue in twenty twenty-two. The initial allocation was for fifty thousand dollars. So clearly, this is going to exceed that. This, my recommendation, this is the low bidder. Some of the other bidders were exponentially higher, like over three hundred thousand dollars. That's, not to cast any dispersions, but that's what happens when you wait three years to do a construction job, number one. And particularly with this issue, we are not in ADA compliance with our front walkway. I know the clerk had issues when the state came in and they were doing a site visit during the voting season. We are one trip and fall lawsuit away from having serious liability. So it is my recommendation to the council that we supplement with current gaming funds so we can award the bid so we can start the construction. With the contract, and I believe it's part of your backup, the front entryway to Town Hall will not be accessible for approximately a month. So it'll be a total redo and then what we'd have to do is make arrangements to use the walkway going into the town administrator's office for accessibility, both handicap and, and normal patrons.
Mr. President, motion approved nine F as stated in the agenda, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second, discussion?
There you go, yeah.
Counsel Demidiris.
So we already allocated fifty thousand.
We have fifty.
So you want another one thirty-five?
Correct, correct.
So it's good, okay.
Correct, so that'd be another resolution that the solicitor would have to prepare, which I believe he might have.
Right, that's why I'm asking this.
Yes, ma'am.
You definitely want the one thirty-five.
Correct, correct.
Mister Administrator, the difference between the one thirty-five and the fifty, or the one thirty-five?
The one thirty-five, which is the fifty already allocated. So this is awarding the bid, but the resolution will be for the fifty that's already been allocated plus the, the remaining balance.
Just for a point of clarification, item Q on our agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-five double oh eleven. Mr. Administrator, it's my understanding that in that resolution, the delta between the award of this contract is included, so we would be doing that resolution for the casino gaming tonight.
You already have the fifty.
We already have fifty, yep. So this is.
You're adding one thirty-five.
That's what I'm asking, okay.
So that's what, that was my question, why those were different?
Correct.
So.
And there's, and there's other items in, that we're gonna go through for other contract awards, which if there is a delta that's contained in this resolution here.
All right, that's where, okay.
Which is why the number is different.
Explain to me the heated walkway.
Thank you.
Hey, Rick, the heated walkway.
Yes, ma'am.
Explain that, so I, I, why do we need it? That's what.
So we have, we have it at the senior center, so I talked to, we do. And we, I talked to maintenance here. It works well. In speaking with the contractor, it's, it's definitely a doable thing and on top of that, is it a bit of a luxury? Yes, it is. I won't deny that. However, by the time that we're going to be looking at a new walkway, I'm assuming that unless we're getting a new town hall, this is going to be the walkway that is going to be handicap accessible, but also in the event that there's an ice buildup on the walkway, it'll be as easy as flipping a switch. And then it's installed at the senior center, it works very well, and given the patrons that visit the senior center, we have the same type of patrons that come here. So it was more of a safety add-on that the senior center already has experienced, so yes, that's why it was added to this project.
Counsel Janik.
Go first.
Counsel Janik.
Thank you. So.
It's being the gentleman, Robert.
So the chief, the senior center, what's the surface of that walkway?
I'm not sure.
Like, is that?
It's concrete, Jim.
It's concrete, so it's not painted then?
I don't believe so.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, sometimes they'll do paint with like sand in it, so it makes it a little bit less slippery. What is this going to be?
I don't know yet because this was just to award the bid. The next thing is going to be like a rendition of what it's gonna look like, but in the visits that we had with the bidders, that whole area, because also this is also gonna include a handicap accessible door.
We, I know, we.
So with a, with a, basically a, a stop, push the button, that's going to open automatically and close automatically, so, and also the ramps, also the door that is in the town clerk's office, that side door or that front door, that is also going to be repurposed as well to also allow handicap accessibility. And it's also going to give some flair to the, to the, to the town hall. So when you walk up to town hall with the railings, with the lighting, that it's going to be not only handicap, handicap accessible, but attractive for the aesthetics of the building as well.
It is concrete.
So, so the threshold right now, it is very difficult to get a wheelchair over because we had someone here and I had a lot of trouble and I do that for a living. It was very difficult. I will say that when I saw the heated walkways, I thought it was excessive, in all honesty. Making us handicap accessible truly is mandatory.
Yes, ma'am.
But I understand what you're saying. So my next question is, did you go out for bid or is this from the?
We did.
We did.
We did go out to bid. We received, I believe, two to three bids.
Okay.
That bid is the lowest, the lower bid, the lowest.
Thank you.
Counsel Commendo.
So are we a hundred percent sure about the fifty thousand on top of this? Because as I read this bid for one thirty-three, it's counting all the stuff that you are talking about. So I don't understand, the total should be, I mean, they should have that fifty thousand in this bid.
They don't know, they don't know about that.
So, so we still have the possibility of, so why are we going to one eighty-five then?
Counsel, Counsel Commendo, I just, let me add some clarity here for you. When you look at item Q, that is, that is the resolution that has, it's a hundred and eighty thousand, right? This bid is for one thirty-five. We have, the prior council has already allocated fifty thousand dollars that has been unspent. So it's one thirty-five minus the fifty thousand plus subsequent projects. If we were to award all of these, would amount to an additional hundred and eighty thousand in casino dollars that need to be allocated and that's why that number one eighty is in the resolution.
So this project's still gonna cost one thirty-three or one thirty-five?
This project's one, one thirty-three, nine, nine fifteen. Minus fifty, that's already been allocated.
We need to reallocate the fifty thousand dollars because it's already been allocated.
Thank you.
And that's why my motion was for the one thirty-five that's listed in the agenda.
We're going to, the, the, the proper motion which you made was to accept the bid and then the funding piece is what comes up in the, in the resolution nine Q. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
It's not even late.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible vote from the administrator to award the contract for window replacement for the Tiverton Clerk's Office in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Mr. Administrator or Madam Clerk, would you like to pontificate?
It was previously allocated for three thousand dollars.
Thank you.
We waited three years, it's now fifteen.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve nine G.
Okay, so that's an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by both Counselor Paul and Demidiris. Any further discussion?
I would just say I looked at this bid and it's competitive. We need new windows to get it done.
Will we be able to remove the trash bag over the computer? Very good.
And, and we should get savings on heating and all that heat that's going up.
And just as Counsel Commendo just commented, I mean, obviously, we're doing a lot of upgrades and we're getting caught up on some of the upgrades that were previously approved by previous councils, which is a good thing. But one of the issues that specifically with this is computer technology was also approved by you and we're working through that with installing new computers, but one of the computers that is in the clerk's office sits underneath the window and is specifically used for all the secretary of state in voting. Because the clerk, being the diligent person that she is, and the window is leaking, she covers the computer with a trash bag, just when it rains, just to make sure the computer does not get damaged. So the need to replace these windows, I think, is evident.
Okay, wonderful. Any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is Administrator Jones, discussion and possible vote to award the contract for interior painting of Tiverton Town Hall offices in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Mr. Administrator.
So again, this, these were previously approved funds. Also, I want to note for the record that both G and H are a local Tiverton company, so they are going to be doing both the installation of the windows and the painting as well.
Okay, do I have a motion from the council to award this contract in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve nine H, not to exceed the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Counsel Perry. Any discussion? Counsel Janik.
What have we previously, we had not previously awarded this?
There was previous awards to the clerk's office, I believe, for ten thousand and the treasurer's office for fifteen. So it's, it's minor, but we still need more, my group.
Well, because we're gonna do all of it.
Yep, we're going to, with all due respect, get rid of this awful tan.
Hooray.
So we had approved twenty-five thousand.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, none opposed. Next item is interim administrator Jones, discussion and possible vote to award the contract for installation and replacement of flooring and carpeting in Tiverton Town Hall offices in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Administrator, same bat story, same bat channel, okay?
Yes, sir, but I will add that this was the low bid as well and this also added But I will add that this was the low bid as well, and this also added the council chamber to it. I know that we've recently, we recently did the council chambers, but if you look at certain areas, like right behind you, there's huge stains there. So we're still getting the lower bid, and with the addition of carpeting, the council chambers for the lowest bid, and to include all the other offices, to include town administrators, clerks, treasurers, building official, so we're kind of doing this all in one suite.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Counselor.
I would like to make a motion to approve 9I, not to exceed the amount of $50,000, so we can get some nice new floors in here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Paul. Any further discussion? Counsel Comito.
Go ahead, you can go first.
I was just gonna, I, I know it's been mentioned, but I just wanted to clarify for those at home that this is not new tax dollars that we seem to be just kind of brushing through. It's all previously allocated gaming revenue, and some of it, of course, has gone up a little bit, but it's gaming revenue that's paying for all that.
To save taxpayers.
Counsel Comito.
So, two concerns with this one, and could be just simple answers. Is this truly a flooring company, or is this a contractor who's going out to hire a flooring company?
That's a great question, counsel. I'm not sure about that.
So everything, everything I read here is that he's a contractor?
Okay.
And it looks like he's going out to bid. All his references are on construction, and he only has one job that he did with carpeting in the city of Newport, actually it was laminate flooring. And then the second part of this bid, I don't understand, is why they want to use a two-by-two, instead of a carpet, they want to use a two-by-two square. So every carpet will be a, a square. I don't know if they mentioned anything.
And, and that's what we wanted in the bid. So this way, if, kind of like the issue that we had over there with the staining, we wouldn't have to replace the entire carpet. If something happened, we would just be able to replace a specific portion of it.
Okay, those are my concerns.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counsel Jannick.
And had we approved this in the past? How much did we?
I believe I used the money to do it in the past.
No, no, this was after that. I think it, I think it was 12. I'm not positive.
Mr. President, can we approve this, like, on the basis that this is a carpet company?
I don't think it is, though.
I, I know, I, that concerns me. There's a big difference of a contractor putting some glue on a floor, and a company coming in to do it correctly. I, I'm just not.
Well, all, and Solicitor can correct me. We're awarding the bid, so I'm assuming we're going, that authorizes me to sign a contract with this person. So they're going to have to present a contract to me about the scope of work. So if there's any questions, then I'll consult with you, Counsel, and of course, with the Solicitor and the full council. If there's anything that I have any questions about, I'll come back to the council, and then we'll reconsider this.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to add to that, I'm not sure that some of the other ones we approved here are, you know, directly, like, just a window company, or, you know, just a painting company, or just, you know, some, some of them, you know.
I did read them, the local company, they are a contractor, they do do painting and construction.
And roofing, and, you know, so that's kind of like a general contractor.
Well, that's construction, though, that's not flooring.
I'm just saying, some of the other ones don't just do, you know, you know.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed. Okay, next item on the agenda, Administrator, update on the 2025 Rhode Island Site Readiness Grant Program. Mr. Administrator?
So I know that this was brought up during our previous meeting by Mrs. Jones of EDC. This is just, the grant is due at the end of the month. I'm going to reach out to Mrs. Jones, so we can get a scope of work. But it's my intention to apply for the grant, this is just more informational for you, because she did bring it up during our last meeting. So I want to assure you that I'm going to work with her on any specific projects, so we can submit the grant prior to the deadline.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Next item on the agenda, Town Clerk, discussion and possible vote to ratify the Iron Mountain Records Management Contract for Off-Site Storage of Town Council and Probate Permanent Records.
Yes, this is a, this is a Phase One of off-site storage of records, specifically permanent records. We're starting with the town council, which are permanent, as well as probate. If you've ever looked in the sub-basement down there, you'd be as concerned as I am about water leakage and records being destroyed. So I want to get these off-site to Iron Mountain, they're a reputable company. They are on the.
Master price.
Master price agreement list. And this is just for those two items. The cost is a little over 12,000 for this first phase. That's, and it will probably be less than that, due to the fact that we can take some of the work on ourselves, rather than doing it, we can do it ourselves, and that'll reduce the cost. I do want to mention that there's an ongoing cost, I believe, like 2,000 a year, to maintain these records off-site, but I think it's well worth it. The little over 12,000 cost for the initial Phase One will come out of the Fund 262 account. So I want to make sure that that's in the motion, that it will come out of the specific fund that is for historical preservation of records.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the contract with Iron Mountain, with the funds for the initial setup to be allocated from the Historical Records 262 account.
I'll make that motion, that's a mouthful though, so what he said.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Counsel.
I'm not repeating that one.
Motion by Counselor Hayden, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Counsel Comito? By all means.
So who, are they responsible for moving all this stuff to Boston?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, any further discussion?
I will say, I will say.
I can see him blowing off the back of the highway truck.
I've worked with Iron Mountain in the past, a past career of mine, and they're very reputable. They do this for lots of municipalities and states, it's like, day in, day out, what they do.
Sounds like you're a salesman.
Well, I, I partnered with them in the past on something, but totally, totally irrelevant to this, so I'm just familiar with the company.
We use them at the hospital.
Yeah, hospitals use them, very sensitive medical records, municipal records.
The Rhode Island AG's office has all their records off-site. The, the boxing of the items, they have to come out of the existing plastic boxes that they're in, and have to be put into their cardboard boxes. So that's where the labor comes in.
It's a lot of work, there's a lot of boxes to do.
Yeah, there is a lot of boxes.
Only last week, looking at some of the stuff, it's got a.
You can't even breathe down.
Well, sometimes they even offer like a shredding party, they come in with a truck and shred stuff that you, you know.
It's in the contract.
Okay, so I don't see that, but great benefit.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Get to work, Madam Clerk, you got a lot of, a lot of labor in front of you. All right, Counselor Hayden, discussion and possible vote to implement a conservation fee and establish a Tiverton Conservation Trust for property transactions. We heard the testimony from Ms. Lawrence. What is your pleasure?
We did, and I appreciate that testimony. You know, I think, I think there's a lot of moving parts going on right now with all the developments, obviously, and one thing that we were looking at was, was doing some form of a mirror of the LCAT program in Little Compton to slow the development in, in the town, and, and preserve, you know, our natural resources and our beautiful rural character that we have here in lovely Tivertucky. Oh. Okay, I don't know what this is, but.
These are all, it's one of each, it's one of each.
So I did a little analysis, I put together this.
No, 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 it's just for the ones that didn't get it.
I put together this proposal, and, you know, as an example, if you would have purchased a $500,000 house in Tiverton with this model, in the way that Little Compton does, any, any house sale over $450,000, there's a small fee on that excess, right? So the example I put here would be a 4% fee structure for any property price over $450,000. So the example would be, you know, that $50,000 threshold would, you know, would trigger the fee. So if you look to the last page, I don't know if you all saw this, because it's on, you know, it's on the back of the LCAT, kind of, the LCAT document. So the last page, I put together the financial impact analysis, and this is just an example, of course. If we were to implement a program like this and vote on this, over a five-year span, it would potentially bring in up to $1.86 million into the town, town of Tiverton, you know, tax revenues, in addition to, obviously, slowing development and keeping the rural character. So I don't know if any of you have any questions. The numbers I used here, I used, you know, the average, average sale price, which I got from Zillow and Redfin, over the last several years, which may be a little inflated, right, because property values are a little bit higher than previous, you know, pre-pandemic, if you will. But the median sale price was $480,000 in Tiverton through that, that time range. I did run this by Tricia with Planning Board, I did send this to David Roberts, Tax Assessor, and I think it was received very positively, so.
Mr. Solicitor, you had something to add?
So this is a policy issue, in order, Little Compton is able to do this because they have enabling legislation that allows them to pass a fee above and beyond the transfer tax that the town order collects. So in order to do this, we'd have to ask the legislature to give a special, enabling legislation to have a special tax rate on those properties that meet the criteria here, and then that's where the funds would, that's how you would generate the funds. So we can't do this by, Little Compton has an ordinance that does this, but they have enabling legislation that allows them to do it. So we'd have to do the enabling legislation first, then the ordinance, and then you can decide if the council wants to go in that direction, so.
So Counselor, if I may, because obviously, it's, I mean, it sounds like it's great, the planning's on board, the tax assessor's on board, you know, given that we do have the Open Space Commission, Preservation Commission, would you be open to engaging with them? Because ultimately, I'm assuming if we were to implement something like this, the money would have to be put aside for them to use for a specific purpose, such as Little Compton's does?
I'd be open to collaborating with them. I, I do believe that it might, it may or may not be the benefit to create a solely dedicated, you know, new trust that is, is in addition, above and beyond the current scopes that we already have with land trust and open, you know, open space conservation, so that we would almost have like a third group, not to have redundancies here, but there's pros and cons to merging them, and there's pros and cons to starting a new fund and a new trust. So I would just leave it at that, and, and I would definitely refer to Mr. Bryan, if you wanted to speak about the, the subject, then I'd be very open to hearing your thoughts on it.
Yeah.
So, so I, I get some concerns and questions. So these fees, they pertain to a single-family home, if somebody's gonna?
Any property purchased in the town of Tiverton.
So if somebody's gonna build a?
Someone's gonna build land, they would, whatever that purchase price of that land would be, above $450,000, they would pay a 4% fee with the, with the way this proposal's currently written.
Okay, so we already pay a betterment fee? So this would be on top of the betterment fee?
I'm not familiar with that.
So when you get, when you build a, a single-family home, part of your permit process is, you have to, you have to pay a certain percentage of the betterment fees, impact fee, betterment fees, that goes to the general fund. So now, when somebody? No, it's not just for the schools, it goes to the general fund. So that's already a large number.
Correct.
On their project. So now, a single, somebody building a single-family home, if I want to build myself a new house, I'm paying a lot for its fees. I understand what you're saying, and I think there should be more to large developments, right? So if you're putting in a large development, I don't know if you can segregate, whatever, but to penalize somebody who wants to build a house on top of the betterment fees, and then this, it's to try to sustain an open space, I get it, but we're adding a lot of fees.
So the, the Little Compton model is a transfer tax, so anytime property's transferred, so it could be a single-family house, it could be a 28-comparted land, anytime there's a transfer that exceeds that, whatever the amount you set, they pay the extra tax on that. So this is, that's, that's, this is what this is. This is, in addition, they already pay a transfer tax, I think, I forgot, but it's a percentage per.
So if I want to give a land, piece of land to my child, I'm going to pay this fee?
No, that's actually, the way they get around at Little Compton is the family will sell it to their child for a dollar.
So I just need, I need more information before I can support it.
You could do a quick clean deed as well.
Counsel Jannick.
Concept is good, but I just need more information.
So this talks about 25% of that would go to land and open space preservation, where we already have money going to them, but in your next item, you want to negate that, which actually, the taxpayers voted for, so you can't just negate that.
I'm not negating it.
But, well, that's.
They're two separate items.
Well, but that's to like eliminate that. The land and open space preservation, I really don't want to play around with any of the money that they get, or if this would change it. They're a group that have been able to obtain large numbers of land for open space for our town, and you may not see them all around, but they're working really hard in the background, and I really wouldn't want to change that. Plus all, taking in this percentage and splitting it between like open space and then property tax reduction, I'm not even sure if that's legal, if you could do that, so.
Enabling legislation lets you do whatever the enabling legislation lets you do.
That's a fair statement.
Yeah.
The thing is, is that people want lower property taxes, and they also don't want development. If we don't have development, we don't have more tax money coming into lower people's tax money. So we have to find another way to do it. And this is the way to do it, and it's tried, tested, verified, and it works in Little Compton, and it will work in Tiverton.
A plague, I think.
And, and, hold on, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. The conveyance tax that you're referring to is a fraction, a drop in the bucket compared to what we're talking about here. The conveyance taxes paid on your deed stamp tax when, when, when a house is sold, this is a percentage of the value of the home. It's, it's astronomically different in, in the funding amount. So there are apples and oranges, they, you can compare them if you want, and I will speak to the conveyance tax when we get to that agenda item, because there's another reason why I'm requesting that we temporarily amend that amount, so we'll get to that. But if, if you read through this proposal, it works. If you read through Little Compton's, the act that they passed, it has worked since 1985. Look how quaint that town is. I know we're not the same, I know we have a larger school system, we have a lot of other, you know, costs that, that, that they don't have, trash, you know, things like that, but we have to find a way to lower our property taxes. That's what the people want, and, and they're, you know, this is a way to do it in a, in a, in a nice, quaint way that, you know, reserves the natural resources.
How is it lower the property tax? I'm not understanding that.
Did you read it? So you buy a house.
I understand that.
You buy a house, the fee that gets paid goes into that office over there, and then?
This one right behind us, actually.
Oh, okay. Taxes, and, and, and next year, we're going to be lowered a little bit.
I don't like to comment, did you read it? First of all, okay? So I'm asking something I don't understand, right? So let's just relax and talk through it. If I build a $750,000 home, or, or I sell a house at 750, I gotta give $30,000. Where is my savings?
That is, that is, you don't have to give $30,000, the person buying it has to give $30,000.
And then he's gonna?
You're gonna give that to all the taxpayers, is what he's saying.
Exactly.
So, so this demotivates people to develop in, in the town? Do, do you understand? That's, that's what we're trying to do, right?
If I want to better my life or better my property, you're gonna charge me to do it, and I'm gonna live there.
I'd like to.
That's not, that's not.
Counsel, Counsel DeMadires.
I'd like to make a motion to table this right now until we do a little bit more investigation, and I would really like land trust and conservation and open space to weigh in on this also.
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded, motion to table and discussion, correct? Okay, so all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And Counselor Hayden, this is by no, by no means a shot against the work. I think you've done a phenomenal amount of backup here. I think there's definitely some questions we want to, we want to answer, and I would love to get open space and land trust and the, the various parties involved, because I think that what you've outlined is an opportunity for us to increase the amount of money we have for them to go out and do the very important work that they do. I just want to make sure that we, we get it right with one swing of the bat, so if So if you wouldn't mind connecting with them, or Mr. James is here, or perhaps we could ask the administrator to set up a time to review it, because I think you're on to something.
Yep, thank you so much.
All right, Counselor Hayden, discussion and possible vote to revise current 25% allocation from real estate conveyance tax revenue to better align with town fiscal priorities and land acquisition needs. Counselor Hayden, given the tabling of the prior item, maybe we can put those back together as one?
I'd rather not. These are two totally separate. One is a fee on the property sales price. One is to adjust the current 25% allocation when there is a transfer of a deed stamp and a sale of a property.
Okay.
So I'd like to continue to move forward.
Take it away, Counselor.
Yep, so again, you know, we're going through some acquisitions in the town, land acquisitions, and would like to allocate the funding for some of the larger land transactions that we have coming up in the near future to get some of that money back into the budget for, you know, I'm not saying this is a permanent vote, but temporarily, we'd like to make a motion to lower the conveyance tax allocation percentage to 10% from the existing 25%. It is 25% that was confirmed by Denise, the treasurer.
Do we have a...
So just, this is by ordinance, so if we're gonna do that...
Oh, so we need to advertise.
You're just trying to be to draft an ordinance to...
All right, so...
And then we have to advertise it, because it's by ordinance.
25% was given by the treasurer, so if you have a different number...
Hold on, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna read it.
Yeah, okay. I have an email I can refer to if you need it.
If you have the section, it'll be helpful.
I believe, and I do believe it is 25%, because I remember...
A minimum. A land conveyance transfer tax, a minimum of 25% of all revenues received by the town of Tiverton as a result of the imposition of the real estate conveyance tax set forth in 4525-1, which is the real estate conveyance tax, shall be placed in a restricted revenue account to be established by the town treasurer, under the purview of the Open Space and Land Preservation Commission in accordance with the provisions of the Town Charter, et cetera, et cetera. So it is a minimum of 25%. So it is, yes. So if you're gonna change that, you have to change the ordinance.
So, and so, so just to...
That's Section 2-95.
So I'd like to make a motion for the solicitor to write a resolution to change the current minimum 25% to 10%.
Would it... So we'd have to draft the ordinance?
Correct.
The amended ordinance and advertise?
Correct.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, what we're voting on here, so...
So this is authorizing me...
Authorizing you to draft the ordinance.
For future consideration, to lower that tax, that percentage from 25 to 10. If it passes, I'll draft it. You'll then come back, you'll see the ordinance, then you'll decide whether you want to advertise it or not, and then you'll have a public hearing if you do advertise it. Because the fee is set by ordinance, you can't change it by any other way but changing the ordinance.
And what would the fiscal impact of that be?
I am not an accountant.
So before we continue, so we have the motion to direct the solicitor to draft the ordinance as outlined or requested here. Do we have a second? I'll second for discussion. So the discussion piece here would be, at least from my perspective, is that if there is pursuit of the prior item which we tabled, and there is an option there, I think it would be worthwhile to see what the draft ordinance is. We can ultimately, as a body, decide if we're not gonna move forward with the, you know, proposed changes to the conveyance task, as we've asked Counselor Hayden to go back and speak to the other bodies about, and we just don't advertise it. That would be my...
That would allow you to have a discussion?
At least we'd have a discussion and dive into the fiscal impacts.
I will note, this was discussed in executive session, and I requested that this one be an executive session agenda item, but it is public, so I just...
Because you're amending an ordinance.
Right, so I just want everyone to be clear. Some of you have missed some executive sessions, so I want you to be all in tune.
Well, I've only missed certain subjects in the executive session.
Okay, so...
And some of them are related to it.
Counselor Janik.
I do believe that this was on the ballot some years back.
You can change it, you can change by ordinance.
Even though the, even though the vote is voted for this...
You can codify an ordinance, and you can change the ordinance anytime.
For historical reference, this was a budget resolution that we would do every single year when the town voted on the budget, and we would include this as a budget resolution. Because it was perpetually the same budget resolution, we decided to codify it as an ordinance, not we, this council, but we, the prior council.
Yeah.
Same goes with the restricting of the funds for improvements in the industrial park, as an example. So it is available to be changed, as the solicitor said. So my opinion, see what the ordinance looks like, hash it out then. Counselor DeMeaders.
I think this is gonna affect the open space fund tremendously, and they're doing good work, and they're buying land, well, during the process of buying more land. I just don't agree with this at all.
From the deed stamp tax, yes.
Like 25% is...
Counselor Kamino.
So by decreasing this, would they receive less funds?
Yes.
But...
In a vacuum, sir.
If the other part of your plan takes place, funds from that go to this?
So I don't want to get myself caught in between a rock and a hard spot here, and I'm not sure what I can say, because we discussed that in executive session. This is supposed to be a temporary play, as we discussed in executive session, based upon the land acquisition that is underway.
Well, you're talking about the transfer, but it's no longer a secret. You're talking about the purchase of a land in the industrial park.
Yeah, we said we were gonna lower the conveyance tax.
That's a separate, that's a separate ordinance.
That was a discussion.
Okay, we discussed it, and there seemed to be interest, so that's why I put together, that's why I put together the agenda item, you know?
You're looking at me like Freda. There's nothing wrong about discussing...
No.
No, no, there isn't anything...
These are ordinances, these are public documents.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure.
So back to my question then, this will reduce the amount that open space takes in?
Yes.
But will they see any part of the, this program is to bring this 4%, bring some money back to open space? On purchasing land, or to save tax money?
That's a proposal to open a new trust, or merge that trust with open space, and take purchase and sale of 4% of the purchase price of property sold, and that money would go allocate some to the tax office, some to their department. So they'd be getting a huge increase with that program. This one would reduce miniscule, because that is only on the conveyance tax. When a property is sold, conveyance tax is, you know, pennies on the dollar compared to a 4% fee of the entire purchase of a property.
Okay, that's what I'm just trying to get straight, thank you.
So we're sliding this down temporarily while we close on ICEPLEX, so that those funds that would normally go there can be used for the town for other budgetary items.
Okay.
Do you understand? Do you guys remember now? Okay, so I'm not trying to take money from them, then give them money and all that. I'm trying to, we have a land acquisition going on that we'd like to use the deed stamp tax, conveyance tax towards other budget items, but now we have a better plan that's gonna...
Okay, so just to surmise...
And give them millions of dollars each year, right?
Thank you.
So...
Just trying to get it straight in my brain.
So to surmise, tell me if I'm incorrect. The idea here is that when we have the transfer tax, if those sales go through and they're ultimately closed upon, is that those dollars would be, from that specific property sale, would be reserved for use for the town. And then I'm assuming we would then advertise the ordinance and put this back until we got something resolved on the 4%. I don't know if we could do that.
I don't understand what you're trying to do.
I don't, yeah.
Temporarily ratchet it down.
Yeah, but the ordinance?
And then ratchet it back up.
Sure, you can change an ordinance three times a day.
Yeah, well, we have to advertise 21 days, so... Okay.
Is this all clear? Because I'm sorry to interrupt, Counsel Vice President. The Tiverton Industrial Park land sale is a subsection of the General 2-95. So if we're talking, are we talking about reducing that as well? That's what I'm confused. There are two separate ordinances, two separate, excuse me, there are two separate sections of the same ordinance. The first one is says a minimum of 25% of net proceeds generated from the sale of any parcel of land within the Tiverton Industrial Park shall go into, shall be placed in a restricted reserve account as established by the town treasurer to be used exclusively for infrastructure improvements. That's separate.
Yes.
That money goes there. The second one is land conveyance transfer tax, a minimum of 25%, which is state law, when I say the transfer tax is state law, 25% of that is given to the Open Space Committee. So that's, those are two separate sources of revenue.
Yep.
But one is specifically for the sale of the industrial park. So you mentioned something about the transfer of the, I don't know what you're lowering.
I think, I think my, I think, again, I'm...
You got it right, John. I'm only talking about conveyance tax, not the 25% that goes toward the infrastructure. And sorry, everyone's so confused. The conveyance tax, one, I wanted to get this on the agenda several meetings ago, and it being backed up with the other one here, it's kind of, you know, it seems like it's conflicting, but they're really not. So I digress.
Counselor.
I believe what you're trying to say, you're trying to do is, that sale goes through, that little bump comes into the general fund.
You got it.
And then we eventually change this back to 25.
If you want to.
But I'm just saying, as far as the bump to the general fund, that would essentially be one-time additional funds. So even though we could apply it to the current, the next budget, for example, we'd have to be careful to not do that the following, because of it being one-time funds.
Well, it's not one-time funds, because all the other properties that sell, not just that one, also have deed stamp tax and conveyance tax, and that would, that would, that would change, right? Well, it could be a $2 million house that sells on Nanticoake, and the conveyance tax is gonna be more than the industrial property tax, right? It's based upon the sale of the property, right? The conveyance tax.
So the conveyance tax is set by state law. It is a, it's a, I think it's like $2.19 per thousand on the sale of a piece of property. And it's, the state has what the town gets and what we can keep, and that's... And then the state also, if it's over $800,000, they charge more, and that goes to the state. So they're already getting hit by the town, they're getting hit by the state. There's legislation in the state assembly right now that they're going to increase what the state gets so that they can take that money and put it towards affordable housing. And then now, so that's just on the sale price, and that's the conveyance tax. So what you're saying, so can I have an example? So if a property of $100,000 sells in town, there would be a separate collection process of 4%, which is $4,000 on that sale, that would have to be collected somewhere. Is that what the...
No, that's the prior item.
The prior item.
The prior item, but that's not true, because there's a minimum. So it's anything over $450,000, and we can change that to $100,000 or $2 million, whatever number you want to put it at. I just went by the average sale.
Hypothetical round numbers, right? So the way the conveyance tax works is if you have a $100,000 house, per thousand, you get a hun, you have 101 thousands, which means $2, and I think it's, I heard 60 cents is charged.
4.60. 4.60.
4.60?
4.60? Okay, so... So $4.60 per thousand?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
2.30 every 500.
All right, so in that hypothetical example, $460 is charged on the sale of that property as the deed stamp conveyance tax, of which the town gets a portion, which is...
75%.
And 25% based upon this ordinance goes into open space.
But of that 4.60, isn't some of that going to the state?
Yes.
Yes, they have an additional, and they also have an additional percentage that we have to charge if it's over $800,000.
But so for this hypothetical $100,000 transfer, we've got $460 in taxes, of which the, I think the solicitor's looking it up.
I mean, there is a formula here, but the balance, after the state takes, so 30 cents per $2, excuse me, 30 cents... So it goes...
That's why we have a land definition figured out.
With respect to tax imposed by subsection A, which is what we just talked about, the tax administrator shall contribute to Distressed Communities Relief Fund to sum of 30 cents per $2.30 of the face value of the stamps to be distributed pursuant to 451312, and to the Housing Resources and Homelessness Restricted Account established by 42282, in the sum of 30 cents per $2.30 of the face value of the stamps. The state shall retain 60 cents of the state use, and the balance goes to the town, collecting the tax.
So we get, let's call it two bucks, per thousand, roughly?
Annually, we get around 200K.
Okay.
25% of that, of that ordinance gives to open space.
It's given to open space.
So you're talking about 50K here that they're getting, or 1.8 million that they would get if we launched the TCAT program? So, I mean, you guys do the math on it, you know? We can't, you know...
I, so I think, I think instead of doing these as separate items, I think it should be a combined discussion, in my opinion.
Well, can I just make a question?
Yes.
So this is a policy decision. You need, if you're gonna do the program that we just tabled, then you need, we're not there yet. You can't just, we gotta get enabling legislation. So that's what, we have to ask for enabling legislation to set up a similar transfer tax as Little Compton did. So that's, you know, that's not gonna happen overnight. That could happen this legislative session, but I don't know.
So we, so my opinion, I think for us to vote on doing this ordinance, I think we need to see exactly what comes out of the discussions with Open Space, show them the money, and see if that would be preferable to the current arrangement. And if that's the case, then if we're gonna get more dollars into Open Space, why would we not change the current arrangement? Does it, am I making sense to everybody?
I respect your opinion, and that is the short to the story. Yes, I will report back to you after I get with all the other departments.
So do we want to continue this instead to, or just pull the motion to draft the ordinance? We have a motion to draft the ordinance, and I second it. Do you still want to go forward? I mean...
I'd love to vote on it.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? I'll vote with you. Opposed?
Only for further info.
Yeah.
I think you're on to something, and I think we need to figure it out.
This sounds like a great topic for a future council workshop, in my opinion. All right. I, and again, I don't disagree, I don't, don't take this, don't take this the wrong way. I think you're on to something there. All right, so next item on the agenda, Council President, discussion and possible vote to vote on proposed amendment to Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, Parks and Recreation, Section 54-32, additional rules for recreation areas, and to schedule and advertise a public hearing. So this is a motion to advertise. So I'm looking for a motion to advertise by Counselor DeMeaders.
As the way it's written?
Yes.
That's O, that one, and O, where N first? As the way it's written? Yeah.
Motion, we need a second first, then we'll do discussion.
I will do the motion to...
Counselor DeMeaders' motion, seconded by Counselor Paul.
There you go.
I didn't hear you over there.
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry.
She whispered in my ear.
It's not even late.
Okay, discussion, Counselor Kamino.
Yeah, so I see stuff underlined here, so those are the changes, I'm assuming, that... Right? So no motorized vehicles on any beach? Is that what it's saying? Have any saw? That's existing?
The only new things are underlined.
Say that again?
The only new things are underlined, and the strikeouts are strikeouts.
Just adding fees to...
Correct.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Having...
You can't take your dog for a walk on the beach?
Having been dealing with this for well over a year, I just want to clarify, there was a significant pushback from the fishing community regarding the bridge abutment, to which I believe there was essentially a concession by the council that maybe additional signage would caution people to just essentially be careful when they're up there. I myself, yeah, but it's, there's also this one here for B1. We're on N, 9N.
9N.
B1.
It's two sheets stapled together.
And it says, "Fishing shall only be permitted in the specified areas, which at Grinnell's is between the signs." One of the hot button issues last year was the fishing from the bridge abutment. From experience, I go up there with my daughter all the time, these guys aren't just whipping those poles back and casting. They look first before they do it.
So Counselor, if I could just interject?
Yeah, just clarifying that issue there.
The motion here would be to advertise for the public hearing, and then everyone will come and yell at us if they're upset about this. And then we, and then we will, we will make alterations. So any further discussion on the advertising of this ordinance? What, I'm sorry?
We need to amend the "only" because it says at any time in the specified.
Again, we can advertise this and then make those amendments at the public hearing?
That's what you gave me.
Yeah, but the other part was down here, too. So we don't have to amend it now?
No.
No, 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 we don't, we're gonna...
Advertise a moment later.
We will advertise, people will come, they will be upset, we will make changes. And then we will pass it.
Or amend.
Or amend.
Let me get mine out today.
Alright, so motion's been made and seconded to advertise, all those in favor. Okay, next item on the agenda, this is Counselor Paul's, but for some reason, listen under me. Discussion and possible vote on proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 78, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, by adding Section 7886 and 7887, and to schedule and advertise a public hearing. Again, this is to send O, as written. The motion I'd be looking for is to advertise O as written, and schedule the public hearing.
This is all new language, by the way.
This is all new language. And again, people can come and yell at us.
I'm going to be screaming.
Yeah. Let them come and yell. Motion's been made, do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Perry, all in favor. Okay, none opposed. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible vote on proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Finance by adding Division 5, Department of Public Works, Road and Bridge, Restricted Account, and to schedule and advertise a public hearing. Again, this is to advertise on P, as written, and if people don't like it, they can come and yell.
Yeah, that, that's what it is, this is the restricted account, when you get reimbursements from the state for these, from the, this, we put MRPP, where you just voted for the grant, you know, so this, that's all this does.
Looking for a motion to advertise by Counselor DiMediros, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, that noise is back.
Mr. President, based upon the calendar, it would be advertised for public hearing on May 12th.
Wonderful. So all three of those will come up for public hearing on May 12th. Fantastic. Next item, Q, Council President, discussion and possible vote on resolution, Resolution 2025-0011 appropriating funds of $389,715 from the Casino Revenue Account. Looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Comito.
We did have voting.
You've been jumping the votes earlier. Counselor Comito, please.
This is what we talked about before.
This is the appropriation of these funds right here.
Correct.
So, we want to appropriate $71,000 to study water in South Tiverton, the wells. Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and what is the reason behind that?
So, that is a fantastic question. Part of what we heard this evening from the residents who are upset about the housing, and from our state delegation, is that we need to be defensible based on infrastructure. The expenditure of these funds to do this hydrology study will kick off, I believe it's a year and a half long process, to study actual recharge rates for the groundwater, what happens when you put in multiple septics, and where that water goes, does it infiltrate into our groundwater, into our aquifer that people are drinking? So, this, this would be the fundamental basis for the planning board to turn around and challenge those developments.
Totally understand that.
Yeah.
The way our zone is right now, we can't build anything past 177. I say 177 because it's South Tiverton, everything's on wells. We, we can't build major developments down there. We, we can't, we can't even put a three-family house down there right now.
Why?
Because you can't, our zone, our zone doesn't allow it.
It's zoned.
So we're going to spend $71,000 to say that we don't have water in South Tiverton, which.
She's like staring at us.
No, sorry. You were over there.
She's like staring at us.
Madam Chair, please, please clarify. Yeah. I, I think it's not, it's not just there, but.
My understanding, this is just for private and public wells, private wells.
So, I, I'm sorry, Counselor Comito, what was your question about building?
So we want to spend $71,000 to do hydraulic study on the water in South Tiverton, private and public wells.
Okay, it's not just South Tiverton, it's everywhere where there are, where there are private or public wells. So that includes all of northeast, parts of northeast Tiverton, off of Stafford Road, as well as South Tiverton.
And Madam Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, but even in the R120 zone, in theory, if somebody wanted to build affordable housing, they could still get those comp plans, and there's larger lots down there.
Oh, well, completely, the, I mean, just, just to mention, the Friendship Farm development that you're talking about is in the R120 zone.
Trish, how, how does one go about submitting their well to be in this study? Somebody's on in South Tiverton, they have a well or anywhere, and they, they would like theirs to be included in this study, how do you sign up? Is there a form or website or something?
So, the three professors who were running this study at the University of Rhode Island will ask for volunteers, and so they'll ask people to submit, you know, to volunteer, and then they'll probably ask them, it's not required, but do they have any information about their well, meaning, is there a well report, which is probably in the building official's office, right? Which will talk about whether it's a drilled well or a dug well, and how deep it is, and then they'll do some geospatial locating based on data that they have, or the state has, about groundwater hydrology, bedrock, ledge, things that are close to saltwater for inundation, so, you know, as many people who want to volunteer can volunteer, but they'll pick the wells based on a lot of data. The other thing is that there'll be some wells that will have a monitoring device attached to them, but then they also have these, I don't understand completely how they work, but they have these handheld devices, too, which will allow them to evaluate other wells that might not have a permanent monitoring device attached to them. And they're basically going to be looking to evaluate over a period of the year, when we have wet seasons and dry seasons, what the, you know, what the level and condition of the groundwater is, meaning how much, you know, groundwater is, is there, as well as they'll be evaluating the wells for nitrate levels, which is, high nitrate is a problem, and is in many cases caused by more septic leachate than the land can handle. So, once they tell us, we can open up the nominations or, or volunteers, then we will. There is no charge to any, anybody who participates in this particular study. Counselor Comito, did I answer your question about development properly?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, so you can propose one of those anyway, but to the Council President's point, if we have the data to go with, to go to DEM with about the level of nitrate in some of our wells, and about the conditions in areas, and about the, the water level in wells, then that gives us a better opportunity to work with DEM, to come up with regulations that work for us, because unlike the rest of the state, we don't have an aquifer, no aquifers here, number one, and we also have some of the poorest soils for septic systems in the state. So, in, in order to start that process, we have to do the work to say, we've done the research with these eminently qualified people, we need DEM to help us in terms of how they permit septic systems, as well as from a development point of view, you know, how many wells in a given area are sustainable before people don't have water.
So, so, I'll just voice my little opinion on this. As I understand the theory behind this, and how we want to control building in Tiverton and slow it down, when we do some of these studies, what I don't want to affect is, the person that's out there, and I think I've said this from the get-go in all my zoning and our conversations, is I don't want that small person who has a couple acres of a lot, or small area that they want to divide for their kids, and, or, or anything, they want to do something with their land, have somebody say, well, you don't have enough water on your well to do that with your land. I just think that part of it is wrong. I understand about slowing down major developments in all these houses, I just think we have to take into consideration on people's private property and their land, and they're wanting to develop for themselves.
Thank you.
So, so, just to answer Counselor Comito's comment, the point of this study, and, and I can't imagine that it's ever going to be used for an individual homeowner, or somebody who, you know, wants to, hang on, who wants to.
Never.
Well, because the point of this isn't to give us data that we're going to use at a ma, at a micro level, to micromanage, you know, somebody who wants to build, you know, two more houses on their property, they have the land, they can do it. This is really about being able to say, for larger developments, for, for larger developments, what we need from DEM, and what we might need from the Department of Health, in order to make sure if somebody's putting in 45, or 50, or 155 unit development, that there's going to be enough water, not only for that development, but it's not going to de-water the whole neighborhood, and that we're not going to put so much septic leachate in the soil, that everybody's wells are going to have high nitrate levels. This is never, it, the study itself will never be specific enough to be even used, you know, to adjudicate on a lot-by-lot basis. It is not the intention, and it's not the kind of data they're going to give back to us.
You heard it here live.
Yeah, I, I mean, there, there's, there's no intention to use it for that whatsoever.
Thank you. And just to reiterate to Counselor Comito, I mean, we heard from the state delegation tonight, that, you know, potentially requiring a developer to have an actual onsite treatment facility, which costs significantly more, would slow things down, but if the concern is that DEM doesn't really know what they need to do, then this gives them the data, I think, to force, you know, that type of a system versus a conventional septic in certain areas, so.
But only in a certain part of town? Because you are not going to, you want to use city water?
Wells.
Where there's, yep, where there's wells.
Well, so if Friendship Farms doesn't want to use city water, there's nothing stopping them from drilling all the wells for their water needs.
It's, it's my understanding they don't have, they wouldn't have the access to town water.
Well, it comes downstairs.
It's like 30 grand per well, so there is something stopping them, money, you know, it's, it's much more, it's much more expensive. It's much more expensive. But the ROI gets diminished, the ROI gets diminished per unit.
We have a well in South Tiverton, four corners, one well, that feeds the entire four corners. There's nothing stopping the development from getting one well, there's one well.
It's two.
I, I believe it's not, I believe.
Counselor Comito is correct. The Department of Health will allow a developer to put in what is known as a public well. That means it serves a, a group. Again, the point of having this data is not for a public well for a small number of users, because sometimes that makes the most sense. This is really to have this data for when we see very large developments in certain areas, where they don't have access to public water, they can't connect to public sewer, so that we have, we have the data to go to DEM and DOH, and make sure that if they're going to approve these things, that they're going to be safe, and they're going to be effective and reliable.
Edwards told us to collect this data so that we could.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so, motion's made, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. I love when we have vibrant discussion, and then it's 7:00.
Well, what's, what's the point, John?
No, no, listen, I, I think it's good, I mean, it's, we should be having these discussions.
I need your question.
Next item is, Council President Edwards, discussion and possible vote on proposed resolution.
My vote in affirmative, because I'm trusting the words.
Correct.
Of, to say that this won't hurt a smaller development, the smaller, single-family homes.
I'm, I'm, my comment was not facetious.
Nope, thank you.
So, discussion of possible vote on Resolution 2025-0012 to request the reinstatement of general revenue sharing to the state budget. So this is a resolution that was passed in Portsmouth, it's been the Council President's pet project over there for years, looking for a motion to approve the resolution as drafted, and then transmit it to our state delegation and surrounding communities.
So moved.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Next item is interim administrator, discussion and possible vote to approve contract with Rhode Island Housing to act as a monitoring agent for collecting data of the number of mobile homes in Tiverton to be counted towards the town's municipal low slash moderate housing rate. Mr. Administrator.
So this was a project that began by the Planning Board Chair, Mrs. Hilton. Also, we've been in contact with Rhode Island Housing, you heard it from our delegation this evening, you have a copy of the contract, I believe it's $25 per mobile home, so we can work on moving that rate as soon as possible. So it's my recommendation to the council that you authorize me to engage in the contract and supply the required information to Rhode Island Housing.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion? I have one bit, we did approve dollars to cover this cost, will this exceed those dollars?
I believe, with the contract, it's contingent on the number of homes, so it could, it, I believe it was $2,500, I believe, but it could go higher or lower, sir.
Well, worst case, we're coming back, looking for more money to make sure these get counted. Alright, motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor? None opposed. Okay, last item on the agenda, Mr. Administrator, discussion and possible vote to ratify the employment contract for Mr. Thomas Verata as building official.
So I think this is an appropriate way to end this meeting.
Yeah.
So, have a seat, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Thomas Verata. He is my recommendation to fill the open position of building official. Just by way of background, Mr. Verata is currently a senior state building official, he has been filling in as our building official for the past two months. He started his career over in One Socket as a zoning official, and also as a, as the building official before transferring to the state. I think it was, we hit the jackpot with being able to get Mr. Verata here. He's working very closely with our new zoning official, and also with the, with the building clerk. He's introduced himself to local contractors, and when we conducted the interview, I also had Counselor Comito sit on the interview process with me, just given his background and his knowledge and his familiarity with these issues. And also, we've all heard about some of the prior issues that have existed in the building official's office, so I am extraordinarily confident and excited that Mr. Verata has already hit the ground running, building his team in the building official's office, that we've definitely turned a corner. So it is my strong recommendation to you, that you approve the contact, and welcome Mr. Verata on as our building official.
Mr. President?
Very impressive resume.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Hayden?
It was my great pleasure to make a motion to approve the employment of Mr. Thomas Verata as building official for the town of Tiverton.
Just to be clear, we're ratifying the contract?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by somebody all over. Alright.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Counselor Comito.
So, I, I would like to say, I was lucky enough to sit in on the interview process. I did have some concerns, he answered every concern that was out there, even the new codes that are coming down, he was already aware of them. He's a very self-motivated person, as far as education, and wanting to understand and learn the new codes that are coming, coming down the pike. Being a coastal community, he's, I think he's either in the process, or wants to roll into a FEMA class, which states, gives all our regulations on the waterfront and building, I think he's going to be a great asset. And not only him, but his entire team in the building official's office is excited for him to come in. And I think we're going to have a lot of changes coming forward, and I think, I think we're going to be a little more business friendly, and he's guaranteed me that, he's going to do the best he can. Welcome.
We really need it.
Thank you. Counselor Janik.[1728.61]